On Tuesday, the 12th of 2012. We will start with invocation and I pledge allegiance to the leaders.
Thank you, Jim.
Gentlemen, if you pray please. My Father, as we enter into this time of Thanksgiving, we first of all tonight want to thank you for your presence in our community. We want to express our appreciation to our mayor, our vice mayor, and the members of the council for their countless number of hours and sacrifice they give in personal time to be able to give the dedication of their commitment to our service. While we lift up our city manager, assistant city manager, and our city staff, we're thankful for each one of them. We want to take the moment now to say, "Thank you." And Father, we ask your spirit to fall mightily upon our city council and upon our staff, and bless they and their families during this very special time of the year. Give them safety and good memories of all. But for the next few moments, Father, we invite your spirit to drop mightily upon us. We ask that you give the mayor, vice mayor, and our council unbelievable wisdom and discernment and insights into the issues that come before them. Father, may there be collectively a wisdom that they gain together that'll go beyond their individual wisdoms. They'll make the best choices for our city. Lord, lead us, bless us, and guide us, and thank you for being with us, and we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jim, for that invocation. That was Jim Reeves from MITA. He's our MITA director, so we appreciate that. With that, we'll move right to roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Chapados?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Councilmember Potter?
Present.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a form.
Great, thank you very much. And we'll move right to number three on the agenda, at which point we have proclamation and awards. We're going to have Latricia come up and issue some awards tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. We get to make these presentations twice a year, and we're so excited to do so because tonight we are going to bring in the most recent graduates of the Maricopa Citizen Leadership Academy. We have 14 people that went through the process, and all of them completed all of their requirements. And they now take our numbers of graduates up to 156 people who have successfully completed the program. We asked them at the end of their six weeks with us, what do they like, what could be improved, because they give us two hours of their week for six weeks. They DVR their favorite shows and spend their time with us so they can listen to presentations from all of our directors, members of the city council, the city manager. And so we like to get some feedback. So we asked them, "How can the Leadership Academy be improved?" And a lot of them say, "Make it longer." They want more. We give them all the information, and they just keep soaking it up. We asked them, "What did they find most valuable?" And they really were impressed with the level of dedication from the city council and the city leadership in bringing products, programs, and services to the community that they really value. They, we asked them, "What did they find least valuable?" They said, "Everything was valuable," so I really liked that answer. And then we asked them to provide us some additional comments to tell us what they think. And we got everything from, "It's a great proactive program." They really loved the size of the group because it was small enough for them to get some really great interaction and get to know other people in the community. And then we say, "Okay, so now you have all this information. What are you going to do with it? How are you going to go out and advocate for your community?" And most of them said they want to become part of a commission, a group, or a member of the council. So I thought that really speaks to them really wanting to take the information and take it to the next level. A lot said they wanted to volunteer with the police department, so see Chief Stahl up here in the front. After you get your certificate, he'll sign you up tonight. A lot said they were going to attend more council meetings, so we're going to have some regular viewership. And then they're going to pay more attention to city happenings and get more involved. And a lot of them just simply said, "Thank you to the city for providing this program." So thank you to the council for being such a great supporter of this program. And for those of you that came out for one night and spent some time with them, they really, really did appreciate that. So, let's get started making some presentations. If I can have the mayor join me. I will say, we have a couple that are trying to get here. There was a really bad accident on the 10, so they're trying to get here. So I'm trying to stall, but we're going to keep it moving, and hopefully they get here. If not, we will mail the certificates to them. If I could have you in the middle for pictures and shaking hands. And as a small token of our appreciation, because we cannot give you those wonderful hours back, we do have a beautiful certificate for everyone, plus you get the very coveted Maricopa Ambassador pin that only Leadership Academy graduates have. So, starting with Mr. Jim Chastain.
Mr. Mayor.
Barbara Christensen. Dr. John Donahue.
Master Clap there. There we go.
Yeah.
Great job. Yeah.
Merry Christmas. And happy Thanksgiving.
Great job. Thank you so much for coming.
Mr. Thomas Fattigay. Congratulations. Thank you. Mr. Jim French. Thank you so much. and you can't get to all your sessions, so we do invite you to come back to the following session to complete your requirement. So we have a graduate from the spring session, Ms. Jo Ashley Gibbs. And so she has completed her process and is now officially a graduate. I warned them about sitting in the back.
Yeah, I know that, sorry. Need my exercising leg.
Congratulations. Mr. Alex Gonzalez. Ms. Kristy Hashisaki. Ms. May McCarthy. Also not present are Rachel LaFalle, Bev Watney, and Donna Weber, Mr. Weber's other half, and we will make sure to get their certificates to them. So at this time, if I can have Paul take a group picture of all of our graduates, we will add you to our fabulous list, and if we can have the remainder of the council join them on the staircase.
All people to the front, all people to the back, and the council to the left.
Good job. Good job. Thank you so much.
And if you're sitting in the audience or watching us at home, and you want to know how you too can receive one of these coveted pins, we will be having Leadership Academy again in the spring, so look for that registration. It fills up very fast. This class filled up in about two weeks after we opened registration, so don't delay, and we will see you in the next Leadership Academy class. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Latricia. Congratulations, graduates. You did a fabulous job. I want you to know that that class is really, really important. I think all of us, or most of us up here, have taken it. It's what really does inspire you to participate in your city. So I know many of mayors from a variety of different cities who proudly list that on their resume because it's something that they've accomplished and really helps them to learn a lot about city government. So thanks again. We appreciate that, and we'll move right into the report from myself, the mayor. I'm going to turn some time over to Councilwoman Gussi, as she has something to discuss.
I actually wanted to thank, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I want to thank the city staff for all their hours and their continued help helping the city grow and helping us move forward. Jim, you stole some of my thunder there, but that was an excellent contribution. I wanted to also thank the council. I have to say that I received a phone call today. It was a bit of a disturbing phone call. I was referred to as a good old boy. I didn't think that was physically possible, but more power to you. And we know, we try to do the best we can, and we know we're going to please most of the people. We want to please most people, and we won't please all of the people all of the time. So as, I wanted to thank, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I want to thank the entire council for getting me through these last six months. I had some personal issues, and you all were excellent. I had many conversations with every single one of you, even the new councilwoman, and I thank you very much for that. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I brought you all a little gift.
And if you want to, Vice Mayor, if you could read what's on the, yes.
Having that. Thank you, Bill.
Is that it?
Nothing you want more?
And like I said, all the countless hours that only us could know here, how much we give up to make sure that we're here all the time, to make sure, and one of the questions that I had at, I was very nervous yesterday. It was the first time that I'd ever done what we did last night. And I have to tell you, it was one of the hardest decisions that I have to make, I've had to make since I've been up here on council. And I have to say that last night, I was very nervous. I kind of messed up on one of the questions, didn't even hear it. But at the same time, you know, only us know what we give up, and you know, the countless games with our kids, the time with our kids in the evening, and I have to thank you all for, one of the questions that I had last night was, "How much time are you willing to dedicate?" And only we know how much time we're willing to dedicate. And Peggy, you hit it right on the mark, as much as this job requires. And you know, we all try to give as much as we can of ourselves, and I want to thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you, councilwoman. I appreciate it. Yeah, and in the spirit of that, you know, I failed to do so, but I think a lot of you were here last night or watched it on television, that we did go through that process, and it was very tough, but we should welcome Councilwoman Chapados, so please do so. With that, I have a few things to discuss with each of you, and the fact that this past week I had the option, or the, excuse me, the opportunity to meet with ADOT, and all of us were able to participate in one form or another. And with, the purpose of that meeting was, we hosted ADOT's Board of Transportation. One of our former mayors, Mayor Kelly Anderson, currently sits on that board. I want each of you to understand how absolutely important that is. He is a staunch advocate for us at the state level, and basically they have the opportunity to allocate resources that will help us with one of our key priorities here, and that is the 347 Overpass. Now, it's a really, really big project, and it's going to cost somewhere in the realm of $72 million, and so we have a long way to go. But one of the things that they talked about was that they were very impressed about our story. They were very impressed on where we've come from, what we're trying to accomplish. And they were also very impressed in the fact that we have so much money set aside for this. Now, I say so much, it's a fraction of the cost of the program, but it is, or the project, but it is an absolute key ally in our ability to get grants from our neighboring Indian communities. It is a key ally in our fight against Washington, so to speak, as we need their help to achieve this money and these projects. And it's a key ally in having them understand what we're trying to go through so that we can get into their five-year plan and actually move up the list in our list of priorities so that we can get something that is so desperately needed here for our population. So I just want you to know that that went very well. I had several board members come up to me personally and other members of the council and tell them, "I didn't know. I didn't know that this is what Maricopa was having to go through." So it's those little things that allow us to make great strides, little by little, you know, step by step and brick by brick. So I want you to know that this council is working very diligently on that process. For those who don't know, I live on the south side of the track, so it's something near and dear to my heart, and would like to see that accomplished as quick as possible, as many of you would probably like to see that as well. The other two or three reports I have quickly to go through is, we have an onsite mammography coming. We just wanted to read it to you. Look for these. You've probably seen them as you walk through here or other city buildings, but it's a mobile onsite mammography, and it's called MOM, and is dedicated to providing quality services with a professional staff and using the latest in digital mammography technology for your safety. This will be held at City Hall, and it will be January 30, 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and January 31, from 7:30 to 11:30 a.m. It's open to everybody in the community. You just have to make an appointment and verify insurance. The telephone number you can call to make that appointment is 1-800-285-0272, or 480-967-3767. So please, I'll continue to announce this, but please pay attention to that. If you have the opportunity, then that would be a good thing to utilize. We also have, the City of Maricopa encourages residents to shop local this holiday season. We know that this can be difficult at times and something that this council is working diligently on, but in that process, we do try and support those local businesses, of course, because they're who are helping us to stay afloat as well. The City of Maricopa is encouraging residents to take part in Small Business Saturday. This is going to be held on November 24 and help support businesses in the community. Small Business Saturday helps local businesses compete with major retailers and online stores during the holiday season. Many of you know that most small businesses are able to, if they're retail-based, they make most of their money during the holiday season. So if you have the opportunity to, and you feel so inclined to support the City of Maricopa, Pinal County, and certainly your neighbors who are those small business owners, we would encourage you to shop local this holiday season, but especially on November 24. So we appreciate that. And finally, the last announcement that I have for you is that, for those of you that haven't seen these around, this is for the For Our City organization, the bright yellow or orange flyers. And the For Our City organization is a group that brings nonprofits, churches, civic entities such as the City of Maricopa together to create a single table in which to discuss the different issues that are taking place in Maricopa. And it really allows for a safe place to do that. In this particular instance, the For Our City organization at this time is putting together a Thanksgiving dinner. It is for all of the community. We just need you to RSVP so that we have some idea as to how many people we are expecting. It is completely free, and it will be held from 11 to 12:30 at the Our Lady of Grace Catholic Church. From 9 to 11, there will be a turkey bowl for any of you that decide to play some football. That will be at the park across the street, which is in the Maricopa Meadows area. So again, the number you can call to RSVP is 520-568-9573. With that, we'll move right into the report from our city manager. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. On behalf of the executive team here at the city, I want to wish you and the citizens of our community and all of our employees a happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully, people get an opportunity to share good times, good laughs with their friends and family. It's a great time of year. I have two other presentations to make. First, I'd like to announce Tom Dunsing, our finance director, who would like to make a presentation of an award that the city has received for the first time in our city's history. So I'll turn it over to Tom, and then I'll have one more presentation to make.
And Mr. Mayor and council, I'll keep this very brief. First off, I'd like to call up our accounting manager, Rebecca Chitwood. Rebecca, if you wouldn't mind coming up. This is one of the good things that I get to do, very, very pleased to announce that for the first time in the city's history, we've been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This award is a big deal. When you go to big cities and review their financial statements, they apply for this award. It's a very detailed process. It's a very lengthy process, and really, without Rebecca, this is not possible. What does it prove? It proves we have a clean audit. You cannot get this unless you have a clean audit, what we call an unqualified opinion. It's also very important when governments go to bond. When we will go to the market, one of the things that we will present is the fact that we were awarded this certificate. Very important. Does it mean we can't go to market without it? No, we can still go to market. Do they look at it and take it into consideration in favorable bond ratings? Absolutely. Absolutely. So I'm very pleased to get this award tonight. It has been council's priority and the city manager's priority to bring the city to the next level in terms of financial reporting. This is the next level. So, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you to present this award tonight to Ms. Chitwood, who absolutely is responsible for this, I would really appreciate it.
This is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the City of Maricopa and specifically Rebecca. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Put the whole together. We've got to get him a better camera. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
This award was an example of how wonderful our city staff are. When you think about Thanksgiving and some of the comments Councilwoman Julia Gussi said is that we are thankful to have really great talent on our city staff. That also means they're coveted. And so the next announcement is bittersweet, and it is with pride that I announced that our Development Services Director, Brent Billingsley, has been offered and accepted the position of city manager for the City of Globe, Arizona. So would like to just announce that. He'll be with the city through December, starts there in January, and this is his last meeting because he has some leave planned and some things going on, so just wanted to, he's been with the city since 2005. He has seen us go through all of the growth and all of the things that we've done as a city. It's just been very honorable to work with him for the past 18 months. We'll miss you, Brent, and I know that there's probably a couple of the members of the council that would like to congratulate you as well. So on behalf of staff, congratulations. We'll miss you.
Counsel, would you like to convey some well wishes? Councilwoman?
Well, as you know, I'm not going to get emotional over this, but I worked for you. I saw you have your two babies, baby girls. You're going to be dearly missed.
Brent, as a citizen, I can tell you how much your expertise and your willingness to always help and offer advice, and you are a wealth of information, and I always appreciated the time you were always willing to take. So thank you, and best of luck to you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Brent, I was, I was on the committee that hired you, and I remember the words from Bob Jackson, who was on that committee as well. He told me that we were going to get somebody very special, and I had no idea at that time what that meant. But looking at it now, we had someone very special in this city. Like Julie, I watched your family grow. I've watched you prosper. I've watched you flourish. You have been an amazing, amazing asset to the City of Maricopa, and you've raised the bar so high that I really feel sorry for the next Development Services Director that comes on board, because they've got some huge shoes to fill. And I just, I want to thank you for all your service. You're an awesome man.
Brent, beyond echoing what the vice mayor said, I have found you to be a real gentleman and a real trooper. You have responded every time I've asked a question, with a pertinent nature, technical nature. If you couldn't answer, you always got an answer for me. You will be truly missed. God bless.
I'd just say to you, Brent, that, you know, my time working with you in this seat has been short, but we've worked together before in so many other areas, and in my homeowners association, et cetera. I don't think I ever really truly realized the amount of work you had to do until I kind of got behind the scenes, so to speak. So I think that you will be very dearly missed, and we appreciate the many projects that you've worked on and helped been very creative in. I think that Globe is very lucky to have you, and I hope you'll put in a good word for us, but, you know, at the end, I think, I think one of the things that we're going to miss the most is that you're always able to give us the good backstory on things, much to some people's detriment and enjoyment of others, but I think the only one that's going to give you a run for their money there, and being able to speak is me, so I'm really going to miss you. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Brent, do you want to say anything? I didn't know if you wanted to maybe go on.
Mayor, members of council, it's a bittersweet moment for me. Been several paces in my career, and I've experienced different things. I was, I did an interview for a reporter this afternoon, and I told that reporter, every time that I've taken on a new challenge and a new position, I've gone in with confidence of my own skills and knowledge and ability to perform, and willingness to work harder than everybody else to succeed. But every single job that I've taken, and every position I've had, very quickly I learned exactly what I don't know. And it's been an interesting journey. I've learned an incredible amount in the City of Maricopa in my capacity as transportation manager and development services director. A lot of experiences, a lot of wonderful people. You have a wonderful staff at the City of Maricopa. Very smart, very committed, very loyal employees that think the world of the council and of the citizens of the city. And two things break my heart about moving on. There's a lot of excitement, but there's a lot of sorrow as well, and those two things are to leave my family, that is, the city staff, behind because I've become very close friends with a lot of the staff members. And secondarily, I'm very sad to not follow through on my promise to Councilman Farrell three years ago at the strategic planning retreat of completing all of your projects by the end of 2013. I've done my best to get those projects in motion, and worked very hard to make sure that they're done in a very professional manner, and that they are very high-quality facilities and done as inexpensively and as professionally as possible. And hopefully, when I come back with my family in five years and 10 years, the City of Maricopa, people still remember that I worked here and the projects that I was able to work on, and the employees that I was able to work with, and the successes that we've been able to have as a citizenry, a council, and certainly a city employee. So thank you very much for the words, and I really appreciate it, and I'm sure that I'm going to be calling all the city staff members and the council members in the future because there's a lot of expertise that sits up at the front of this building and asking for advice on things. And in closing, I had one of the most wonderful experiences of my lifetime last Friday when I was able to receive the distinguished award from CAC, but it was not receiving the award that meant the world to me, and that's not the part that I remember or will remember the most. The part that I will remember the most is the fact that Councilmember Potter came to that. I didn't ask him to. I didn't even know that he knew that I was receiving that award, but the fact that he came to that event, ensured that time with me and my family and my mom and my dad and my extended family, and ensured that moment with me, that meant the absolute world to me. So one of the greatest experiences of my life, so thank you.
Thank you again, Brent. Good luck, and we're going to miss you. Moving right along, we will... Moving right along, we will, I'm sorry, city manager, are you finished? Brenda, are you finished? Okay. Thank you. Move along to the call to the public. So the time in which the public has the opportunity to approach the council and say anything they'd like to say to us. Anyone that would like to come call the public? Seeing no one, we'll close that and move on. We reached items 7.1 and 7.2. See approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries. Moving on to 8.1. It's the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and present to Mary here while she approaches. Public comment regarding use of community development block grants, CDBG funds, and state special projects, SSP funds, beginning October 1, 2013. SSP is competitive, whereas CDBG is a set amount provided to the community and allocated based on Central Arizona Association of Government Regional Council method of distribution. Both grants are submitted to the Arizona Department of Housing and are awarded based on eligibility and funding availability. Mary?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to do a real brief presentation before we open up for public comment, just to give some background regarding these two projects. Figure out how to work this. Sorry, not used to pushing the clicker up here. Basically, the objectives of the presentation are to review what community development block grant funding is, along with state special project programs, review eligible projects that are under both of these types of fundings, and then to gain input regarding potential projects. So as a grant overview, the community development block grant is not a competitive grant. The money comes directly from the housing, the United States Department Housing and Urban Development. It passes down to the Department of Housing, and from there, it's passed out to the four rural councils of governments. The council of governments then determine the method of distribution, and then they're distributed down to the local communities, such as the City of Maricopa. It provides the city with additional flexible program resources to do projects we otherwise would not be able to do. The second component is state special projects funds, which is competitive, and it only is available for lower moderate citizens or programs that directly impact low to moderate income. The project also has to be shovel-ready, which means that when we go to submit the application to the Department of Housing, that design and engineering must be completed for these projects before they will consider this. This is a new part to the program. They recently implemented this probably about six months ago. So basically, the objective of both of the programs is that they're to benefit low to moderate income persons. There must be a community-wide benefit. Unfortunately, though, with the City of Maricopa, we're not, the entire city isn't 51% low to moderate income. There's only three significant areas that we can designate projects into, which are Seven Ranches, the Heritage District, and New Saddleback Vista. Projects can address limited clientele, such as the homeless, senior citizens, and then there must be an area benefit, like the neighborhoods I discussed. It has to, it can address slum and blight, such as the Heritage District that's been formally declared slum and blight, and it can also address an urgent need, such as a disaster area in Maricopa. There are six different components under which projects are eligible. There's public work projects, which include fire hydrants, street paving, public services, such as Meals on Wheels, economic development, creating programs and jobs for low to moderate income individuals, housing, such as rehabilitation, community facilities, such as a library or a police station, and community revitalization, such as rebuilding a downtown area. The City of Maricopa has used CDBG funding and state special project funding in the past for street improvements on Fred Cole, Ed Green, and Dallas Smith, Justin Drive and Plainview, and we've also done the base or the foundation for the domestic violence The City of Maricopa does partner with the City of Eloy, which means that we receive CDBG funding every other year. It's generally funded in the odd years, so we'll be receiving this funding in October of 2013. Historically, we don't generally receive more than $300,000. However, the amount of money we receive is dependent on the federal government's budget. State special projects generally has a maximum allowed amount of $300,000. With that, there are some project ideas. As part of the public hearing, we have to mention all of the projects that we intend to consider. If the projects are not mentioned during the hearing process, they're not eligible for consideration in the application. Some projects that have come forward are completing a water tank for the Seven Ranches area, paving Lexington and Roosevelt Avenue, an arsenic treatment system for the New Saddleback Vista Water Improvement District, street improvements on Steen Road, property acquisition in the Heritage District for demolition, and Maricopa Southside Water System improvements on Phase Two, which I would have to get further information on this one, but Phase One is currently installing four fire hydrants and connecting a main line across 347. With that, I will open it up, or you open it up for additional projects, or if you have any questions.
Any questions? Corey opens up. We'd like to go ahead and open the public hearings. This is the time in which, if you wish to speak on this item and this item only, you may approach the council. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearings. Appreciate the presentation, Mary, and we'll move on to consent agenda. Counsel, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
A second, please. A second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. With that, moves on to our only item on the regular agenda tonight, which is, the mayor and city council shall discuss and possibly take action to counsel or reschedule, excuse me, to cancel or reschedule the January 2, 2013 city council regular and work session meetings for discussion and action. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as per state law, we set our meeting, our regular council meeting dates on the first and third Tuesdays of each month. Our code also, this coming January 2nd, I'm sorry, the first Tuesday of the month in January is January 1st, which is a federal holiday. Our code accounts for that by saying if the, and I'm just going to read the code, "When the day fixed for any regular meeting of the council falls upon a day designated by law as a legal holiday, such meeting shall be held at the same hour of the next scheduled day, not a holiday." So our first meeting of the year would loop over to that next Wednesday, January 2nd. Now, with the holiday season and all the things going on, we've already kind of scheduled in not having a meeting on that first week of the new year, and so we are here to ask council's pleasure on if they so desire to either cancel or reschedule. I think we're recommending canceling that January 2nd meeting and just going along with our next regular meeting, which would be on the 17th.
Okay. Questions, counsel? I mean, what is your preference? Would you prefer, that would mean that the only meeting we canceled this past year would have been the one that fell on July, July 4th, I believe, and then if we did this one, that would be the first one of the coming year. So do we move it to, I mean, there are five Tuesdays in January. Do you want to have a meeting, or would you rather just have one?
I would move the cancellation of that first meeting, Mr. Mayor, and just to have the second meeting, January 2013.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? No? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. With that, we're not having another executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming tonight.